Okay, 6.7, 11:00 AM. North Coast Opportunities Presentation for their new digs program. Hey, come on, join us up here.
Johanna.
Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully I can handle this one.
This is pretty short.
Um.
Is it just a date change or something? What?
It's an amendment of sorts. I don't know what exactly it is.
Why do you don't? It doesn't look like if I'm too smart.
It's our split personalities.
Share.
No, I think it's the up.
This one?
Yeah.
There we go. All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us and if you could take a moment and introduce yourself.
Okay. I'm Patty Bruder and I'm the CEO of North Coast Opportunities and we'll introduce these three in just a minute. But I just wanted to say a little bit about NCO is our community action agency for both Lake and Mendocino Counties. And we were born basically out of the war on poverty back when Lyndon Johnson declared a war on poverty. And it was based on communities know best what their needs are. And so, community action is really focused on community needs. You know, back in the day, the counties, both Lake and Mendocino County, had the first right of refusal about whether or not they wanted to take on this work. And they opted to develop a nonprofit which became North Coast Opportunities. And so, everything NCO does is a community action function. And we have programs like Head Start and Rural Communities Childcare, Foster Grandparents, RSVP, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. And we have built on these programs over the years. And we look at how do we collaborate and partner with other agencies and entities. And I think the Home Hardening Program was a good example of this sort of partnership. But basically, we respond to community needs. And disaster response was an area that we had no idea that we would be getting into that business. And I know I worked very closely with MOOC back in the 2015 fires. And we have developed a lot of disaster response and preparedness. I think our Build Program is another example of responding to community need. And that was built out of, oh, we have no housing to put people in and we need training. And so, that program really focused on that. But we really love our communities and we're devoted to our communities. A few of our programs are in other counties, but Lake and Mendocino County is our heart. And I think that, you know, a good example of, NCO was the Community Action Agency for Lake and Mendocino County. There was a period of about 10, 12 years that Lake County became its own Community Action Agency when our population got big enough to have that designation in each county. For various reasons, it didn't work out. NCO came back. And when we came back, we really looked at the needs of unhoused people at that time. And we realized that there was no COC in Lake County. And we worked very closely with Family Resource Center, DSS, and other partners for those beginning steps of a COC. And we found that there was not that money coming into the county because we didn't have a COC. And you had to apply for the first ESG grant to ever be eligible for any of those funds to come. And our group did an RFP for the first ESG grant. No one applied for it. NCO applied for it over a weekend, submitted it, and that's kind of how we, our new digs program was born. So, I wanted to introduce Justin Gaddy, who is our, one of our Lake County faces and is new to, to us. And we're excited about having him and he will introduce the others.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Again, for the record, Justin Gaddy. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Wellness in Lake County, working with NCO. Very proud to be here and thank you for the time. I run, oversee a number of different projects, including Build. Earlier this year, Derek Fielder was here doing a presentation. I know we're really excited about an upcoming presentation with Home Hardening. Also looking to bring in our disaster preparedness and volunteer network. We do a lot of amazing things. I'm so proud to be a part of NCO and the impact that we're making in our community. And really excited to have our team here that is going to talk to you a little bit about New Diggs. And so, I want to turn it over to Diana and Alicia, who are going to talk a little bit as case managers and their role and the impact they're making in our communities.
Hi, I'm Alicia Doublefield. I am one of the Housing Case Managers for New Diggs. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Diana Maury. I'm a Supervising Housing Case Manager for New Diggs. So, we'd love to be able to give you a presentation. That way, we, we both talk a lot, so this keeps us a little bit more focused.
Can you just move a little closer to the microphone in there?
There we go. Is that a little bit better?
Yeah. You can bend it towards you too, if you need.
Okay, New Diggs, empowering people through housing first. New Diggs is a rapid rehousing program that uses the Housing First model. Meaning that, we believe that our, a family or individual must first have stable, permanent housing before they can move forward with setting and reaching their goals. No one is rejected from the New Diggs program based on credit history, convictions, sobriety, income, or ability to pay. We are a no barriers housing program.
Click on, click on the New Diggs one on the other side.
Oh, oh. Who we are. Programs of North Coast Opportunities, Inc. since 2016. Over 100-plus people housed. Lake County, uh, Lake County Continuum of Care. The mission to align programs and resources to facilitate solutions to end homelessness in our community. Our grants are HSP, ESG, EFSP, and HDAP. Well, you know our faces. I'm the Housing Case Manager and so is Diana of the HSP program over at New Diggs. This is Kalia Barth. She is the Housing Case Manager Supervisor for ESG and EFSP and is currently overseeing the Housing Case Manager for HDAP. Who we serve. We serve families and individuals with homelessness, eviction notices, three-day payer quits, or behind our rent or mortgage. HSP, also known as Housing Support Program. This, this program is for the CalWorks Housing Support Program. Was established to foster housing stability for families experiencing homelessness in the CalWorks program. HSP caseload consists of 50-plus clients per fiscal and average 20 families permanently housed during the time as well. This does not include clients helped with eviction protection and helps, had self-stabilized without monetary support. HSP services provide six months rental assistance on sliding scale, housing navigation, 15 months case management, security deposit, utility payments, moving costs, interim housing, which is hotel stay, legal services, and credit repair. We also offer Making Homes Habitable, which helps families furnish their new homes. HSP wins. 20 families on average placed in permanent housing per fiscal with an 80% success rate of maintaining that housing after graduation. HSP works with local innkeepers and around the holidays to provide a spiritual, or spirited season, including toy drives, gift bags, and decorated local hotels with holiday lights. Challenges we face are locating affordable rentals for the clients that are low income and working with the cliff effect that some clients experience. What is on the horizon for HSP? The goals of HSP is to build our partnership with the community and foster a community where agencies work together and collaborate to lift Lake County and its residents up and empower them.
Sure, okay. So, I'll be talking a little bit about ESG. It's our Emergency Solutions Grant. This grant assists people to quickly regain stability in permanent housing after experiencing homelessness or while in the crisis of homelessness. Eligibility criteria, individuals or families who are literally homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. Services offered are a little bit different. HSP is more based with families and children. ESG is single, and, single individuals or couples that do not qualify for any CalWorks programs outside of maybe food stamps. Case management is offered, including an individual service plan, some housing and financial assistance such as moving, move-in costs, six months of reduced rental assistance and utility bill assistance, and linking clients to community resources. ESG wins. Actually, this was actually pretty recently. An ESG client was housed and also came back to give back to their community, working with CIRK, which is a crisis and emergency risk communication program through, also through NCO. So, that was a big win for us because it blended and bred out our programs. 95%, of housed clients are still maintaining stable housing and self-sustaining lives. Some of the challenges with ESG, unfortunately, it doesn't provide hotel assistance. So, ESG does help with the rental assistance part of it, just not that little window right before where we can get them into some sort of temporary housing while they're looking for permanent housing. What's on the horizon? Since the Coordinated Entry System, or CES, is in place for Lake County, we are now eligible to apply for the Competitive ESG Grant, which offers more resources, including motel assistance. So, that's something we're looking forward to. EFSP, Emergency Food and Shelter National Board Program. This is another one of the grants that we work with and are hoping to get more funding for. FEMA, it's a FEMA-funded program authorized by the McKinnon Vinta Homeless Assistance Act of 1987. Services can include food in the form of served meals or groceries, lodging in mass shelter or hotel, rent or mortgage assistance to prevent evictions, and utility payments to prevent service cutoff. EFSP is a little bit more broad than some of our, our more controlled grants like HSP or ESG. This allows a little bit more of, I don't want to say, you know, gray area assistance, but we'll take it because it fills the gaps that our individual grants cannot. EFSP wins. EFSP funding was utilized during the harsh weather conditions this year, which included heavy rain and snow. These funds provided temporary shelter for those who had no other form of shelter during this time. EFSP funding was also utilized to provide temporary housing to those who have severe medical needs and aftercare from post-surgery. Also, another gap that we find within the service of, you know, being able to help our community is being able to help those people that don't qualify for this, might not qualify for this. We can use these funds to be able to help those individuals. Challenges, EFSP is a smaller grant, so we can't use the funding for longer-term hotel stay. So, these are more emergency needs within the community. We're hoping that EFSP is, can grow a little bit more in that area. What is on the horizon? Again, applying for more of ESP funding, EFSP funding, which we hope to provide more services to those who need assistance in Lake County. HDAP, our Housing and Disabilities Advocacy Program is another grant that we have through New Diggs. Eligibility criteria, those who are actively experiencing homelessness or are chronically homeless. Those who are or appear to be eligible for SSI, SSDI benefits, but are not already receiving benefits. And they must be a resident of Lake County. Services offered, interim housing, that's also hotel stay. Through HDAP, the funding for temporary, temporary hotel stay is much longer due to the fact that we are an advocate through that, for them through social security. And a lot of the times, as we know, social security and its application process is very lengthy. So, we provide that temporary stay through that application process. Short-term, and, short-term rent and utility assistance, eviction protection for HDAP-eligible. That's coming soon. Again, like I said before, disability advocacy, extensive case management, external referrals for services not offered. So, that's again, a partnership within our community. Wins for HDAP? This is just for the fiscal year, so these numbers do look a little small, but they are mighty. Three graduates, large amounts of benefit approvals, one couple still in permanent housing. And again, those numbers are small, but we are working with those challenges in Lake County that we are, as said before, in a housing crisis. So, this is affecting those numbers a bit, but we are working towards better improving those numbers. Challenges, appeal, the appeals process for SSI and SSDI are, again, lengthy and are very time and work-intensive. But that is a part of the case management that we offer through New Diggs and NCO in general is that we're definitely boots on the ground and willing to dig our heels in to make sure that these, our community is helped. Again, to, with New Diggs being a no barriers program and working with the Housing First model, we do ask that clients participate in a housing search to not only have our efforts put in, but theirs as well. There is also a sense of pride in being able to find something that we can help, help a client really close the deal on. So, but housing search, search is a little bit difficult just because there's not a lot of housing. What is on the horizon? HDAP can now provide eviction prevention. Gives me a second to breathe. Okay, so as New Diggs as a whole, these are some of our numbers from July 1st, 2022 to May 15th of 2023. These are the fiscal years in which we work. HSP Housing Support Program has assisted in 50 clients served and 22, actually, that number's a little bit better. We did 22 people housed this fiscal year. ESG year or the Emergency Solutions Grant, 23-plus clients served and 10 people are still housed. EFSP, 30 clients served for one-time interim housing assistance. Again, that's that smaller grant, but it did help 30 clients be able to have short-term stays where they had shelter. HDAP, 10 clients served. Five clients have been approved through SSI and SSP benefits. Again, those, those clients typically, all of our programs run besides EFSP around 15 months in its total likelihood of a case, or total length of case. So, in total, for New Diggs, 113 clients served during this fiscal year, including individuals, couples, and families. This number does not include clients that were served through housing problem solving, eviction protection, and, and individuals who self-resolved and found rentals within, within other housing subsidies. Opportunities for collaboration with other community wellness projects. And I think I want to speak not only to community wellness, but as Lake County in general in its partnerships. We are extremely excited to work with CalAim and in new and broadening housing opportunities, as well as expand our partnerships with Build, who presented previously, bringing NCO, the client, and the landlord into comfortable and sustainable projects and housing. I think the biggest goal for, for NCO as a whole, New Diggs especially, is working with Lake County agencies in general. What we have noticed and what we want to break the barrier of are the community silos within partnerships. We are small in New Diggs, but we are mighty and we would have much more of a louder impact and a louder voice in working with agencies like Behavioral Health, which we do, RCS, and even in the school systems as well, to be able to provide more wraparound services, to, to be able to expand these numbers and help our community a little bit more. Takeaways. I think the biggest thing for New Diggs is that it's pretty simple. We care about this program. While sometimes we can only help so much, we want the client to make sure they are felt, heard, and understood. Our housing support is so much more than the monetary support and that's where we truly make the difference. We can give a housing subsidy, but we, where a lot of our staff really make the impact is after that housing subsidy is done and that cliff effect for some clients takes over, where all of the monetary responsibility is on them and they're not sure how to handle it. That's where we come in. Money's great, but the support is something that the community needs. We provide, we meet the client where they are and not where we think they need to be. And we provide housing case management and problem solving before attaining permanent housing and long after, assuring there is, there is success for every individual family. A message to the general public. We want the public to know that we are very sensitive to the difference between equality and equity. We believe that everyone should have the ability to call a house a home. And we also believe that not everyone has access to that. And if we can, if we can be that bridge, then we can go home every day knowing that we have made a difference and have changed people's lives. Housing is a human right for everyone. Housing is the basis of stability and security for an individual or family, the center of our social, emotional, and sometimes economic lives. A home should be a sanctuary, a place to live in peace, security, and dignity. A lot of what we do with New Diggs is look at housing as a pie, right? Each individual piece being equal and available. But the thing that we don't see a lot of the time is the fact that there's not always the opportunity for everyone to get an equal part of that pie. And the biggest thing for New Diggs and for NCO in general is the fact that the partnerships that we build not only internally but externally are the forks that help eat the pie. The plates that help put the pie on. And we need to be able to build those partnerships to be able to make the impact in Lake County that is needed. So, our referral process is pretty simple. With the Housing Support Program, this is directly through Department of Social Services. So, any family that is experiencing homelessness and is eligible for CalWorks is immediately, they immediately have a referral sent to our office. We respond to them within, typically within three business days, to make sure that those, that's an expedited process. ESG and HDAP are direct referrals or now actually from coordinated entry. So, we are wanting to make the goal of the timeliness and the response to those referrals equal to, if not, more efficient. And how to contact us? Those two above numbers, 461-4574, and our 998 number. And then, we're also available through lakeinfo@ncoinc.org.
So, I would just like to say that NCO is an agency that knows collaboration and partnership is the only way we're going to get things done in our community. And we are available to collaborate on lots of projects. And we can sometimes assist with bringing a project through a grant writing process or looking at how do we all play our place and making sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes and we're complementing each other rather than competing with each other because there's a whole lot of work that we need to be done. And I would just like to say that we, as a community, are really lucky to have the case managers that we do have. They care deeply and they build relationships with people that really make the difference in their lives. So, thank you both.
No, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work. So many of these NCO programs, we see the, the real benefit in the people that live in our communities. So, one of the questions I had about New Diggs is, and I, I think may, maybe it was alluded to, but the, the support that goes, that's wrapped around these families and individuals, does that include some life skills development, like I know with the Build Program? So, they don't end up in this position again and they're kind of better off as they've moved through the program?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's one of those two where we want to, like I was saying before too, we want to meet those, each individual client where they are and not where they think they're, where we think they need to be. So, that goes a lot into the case management. We, a lot of the time, we are, we require that the clients meet with us once a month, but obviously, we, we hear from them more often than that, which is fine. That's what we're here for. And we take, tailor each one of our tools in the toolbox to each individual client. So, if it's something that they need as far as childcare, we'll refer out to our CCC or Head Start. If it's something to where we have an issue, to where we have a client that has problems with their car, that's where FSP through Social Services comes into play. So, it's tailored to each individual case and client. But we want to make sure that we provide, if there's budgeting that's needed. At the end of that six months, we sit down with, if there's a permanently housed situation, we'll sit down with the landlord, the client, and a case manager to discuss another six-month step up or not a step up, but a six-month lease contract, to make sure that not only the landlord's ready, but the client's ready and what that's going to mean. And that's where I was talking about before too, is that, that's where the real case management begins because now those social supports and those monetary supports are gone, so how are we going to do this? And I think it provides the clients and the community that, that we do work with, a lot of solace in the fact that we're not going to go anywhere. We're going to maintain the consistency that we had during the monetary support, six months or eight months more after that. So, it's, it's, a lot of this comes too from the fact that the case managers that work in New Diggs not only have the book smarts, they have the street smarts as well. We come from personal backgrounds, most of us, where we've experienced homelessness. So, we know where those, where some of those issues are going to come up and where the nervousness is going to come up or the I'm going to bail on this whole thing comes up. And we can kind of head that off at the pass and provide that comfort before that actually happens.
So, I know that sustainability in all of your work is always a goal and so I'm really happy to hear all of that. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, these programs work directly with the COC. They work with DSS. We have case management meetings together. And so, we are putting resources together as well as brains and other information so we can deliver the best service to people. But the DSS group has been phenomenal.
Great to hear.
Yes. Just great stuff.
She answered my question.
Okay. Supervisor Green.
Thank you very much for the presentation, if only because it really highlights the complexity of navigation and shortage of housing. So, a couple of quick questions, not to put you on the spot budget-wise, but having some understanding of these, I think, four funding streams I heard. So, what, what the annual amount of those contracts at, where we're at in those contracts? And, and one reason to ask that is it'd be the crudest of crude numbers, but if we can analyze the number of people served versus the amount of government funding going into that, we can get some rough metrics of the bang for the buck and what Supervisor Spatia has asked about for outcomes, you know? How are we doing? Very impressive what we got, but given the challenges, we need to scale it. So, it, any, any very slight budget oversight you could add to this report would be helpful in terms of the amount of grants and, and where we're at in that contract cycle. The other thing that really stood out was, to the extent rapid rehousing is a thing, or even transitional housing, a lot of reliance on, on short-term hotel stays and stuff like that. And of course, we just heard a report from another group, we're trying to bring visitors here in a happy way and fill up those hotel rooms for other activities. So, of the challenges you're facing, is it correct to say that there is maybe an over-reliance on hotels and short-term lodging, if only because there's a distinct lack of private sector housing and in that sector, willing renters, willing landlords who actually open up their homes to a local person in need as opposed to some traveling nurse or, or a tourist? So, so anyway, any budget highlights you can offer in this very short format? And then, any, any drill down you can add to the, the very specific challenges you're finding in securing housing for your clients?
Yeah, I can cover HSP's budget. So, we work within fiscal years at about $758,000 per fiscal year. A lot of this is, it, of course, encompasses everything with New Diggs, between internal costs to direct services costs. So, the client services costs, where, I mean, the troubles that we're looking in, in, in the fact that we, HSP provides interim stay, but with every client that we serve, $4,000 a month per, per family or per individual in a hotel. Now, that is high, but we look at it both, and not only we are supporting local business, but we are also providing temporary stay. We don't like to increase those numbers in interim cost. We stick to 90 days. That is also something that is DSS approved as well, to avoid a complacency. Because that's when, if we get over 90 days in a hotel with a family, then it starts to get a little, a little sticky and that's the type of situation. And that's where we kind of need to put the gas pedal on the case management. And the great thing about NCO and all of its programs is the fact that we are now starting to see where those problems that are coming up that you're talking about, the lack of housing, available landlords, just a sense of, of confidence within the community to, to help improve it as a whole and as a team. And a lot of the collaborations that we've done with Hope Center, with Build, have, are starting to improve that community confidence. Build can come in and offer improvements, while some of our grants can come in and offer landlord incentives. Again, too, a lot of the time, our landlords need the same type of case management and support that our clients do. And as long as NCO and New Diggs comes to the table, that we're not only supporting the client, but we're supporting the landlord as well, that's where we're making our biggest strides and that's why our numbers are, are high in success rate.
And then, this little guy over here? I'd just like to add to that, is that there's, uh, the two other grants that we're involved with is ESG and then also HDAP. Uh, right now with HDAP, we're currently in year two of three, um, so we'll be looking in terms of expanding those services in years, in the year to come. And then we're also getting ready with ESG, uh, to end this round of the non-competitive grant, and then working on not only expanding with the competitive, and there's, we're having discussions of, uh, applying for the competitive grant as well, moving forward for additional funds to continue the services that we provide.
Because ESG is really poorly funded with just the, um, one half of the grant that we have. Now that we're competitive and we can apply for the other half, it's like 116,000 for a year, and that needs to pay for staff and housing resources for people. And it, it's very expensive to house people short-term in order to help them find a long-term housing. And as a community, we really need to look at what other ways can we house people? And, um, could we have a, a tiny home, a village, or could we do some different things? And I think that we all need to work together to figure out how to make some of those things happen.
Supervisor Spatia.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one question. I know that there are, um, at least right now that I'm aware of, 160 units that will open up soon in the city of Clear Lake. There's more to come, but those are the ones that are almost ready. Are you limited by your budget? Are you limited by the amount of houses, or both?
I think both.
Like, right now with your current budget, would you be able to help more than 113 based on availability of new units coming online?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's important too.
When we're looking at rental prices per month, that even though at this time they are high, um, they are less than $4,000 a month. Um, and a lot of the time too, um, we have the availability to negotiate with landlords depending upon their comfort for the rental prices. Um, but if we had the availability of, I mean, we had 116 units that people could afford, I mean, we have a much stronger community just in that little piece. So, um, while both come into, um, into a factor as to, as to why we're experiencing such a, such a housing problem within Lake County, um, the availability for affordable housing for the people that have been here, um, since they were children, it's no longer an option for them to stay. And that's a problem.
I'll just add to that too. I think that's a big part of what we're doing right now with our team is collaboration and working with different agencies in the county to make sure that we're using resources to work together. Case in point, the, the relationship we have with Hope Center. I know the staff from there, we've been able to build a great relationship and not only working with several of the same clients, uh, but making sure that we have ongoing working relationship with landlords and hotels, and making sure that we're working together to, uh, find the best situations for our clients that we serve. Um, and that's, that, that simple thing of collaboration with them and other agencies is so key to continue to move forward and provide the best situations for the people we serve.
Okay. Go ahead.
You know, in the spirit of the collaboration, obviously Patty, yeah, we've worked through the valley fire, and, you know, a lot of things have come out of that as we're doing. The home hardening program being one of those, we were asking it for a long time. Being a pilot program is very exciting for, for Lake County and building a program for the whole state, you know, not just one part of our community, which is happening now, but expanding that all over. So excited about those partnerships. But as you guys are going for the competitive grants, it's one thing to talk about breaking down the silos and the collaborations, but making sure that when you do those things, that you get to contact one of us, our NCO appointee, that we get those on the board level here for support letters, not only from us and the cities, uh, because when they see those in those collaboration efforts, when those support letters come in from all the, uh, cities and municipalities working together on it, um, you know, really encourages that, especially with FEMA, uh, who does have an eye on Lake County right now, and we could also engage with Congressman Thompson, want to make sure. And just as you said, Patty, we can't, county can't do it, cities can do it. This is a complete collaborated effort. Make sure when you're going for these competitive ones, that we have those letters as many as possible going in with, to support, you know, that next step in this growth. So, thank you for everything NCO does, and, you know, obviously, I love the contact number there for these programs, but, um, you know, just trying to work together is always something we're doing. So make sure we get those support letters as these new grants will be going in.
That would be great. And, um, we also really appreciate that Jessica has joined the NCO board, and I think that'll be a really great addition and a, a nice conduit to, to our, the work that we're all doing.
Yep.
Because I think when it comes down to it, we're just all working for communities that we all want to live in and support each and every one of us, so we'll keep at it.
Yes. All right, let me open it up for the public. Is there anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room with input? And I'm not seeing anyone in either space. So this was a presentation, and so no action is required, and we really appreciate you being here and joining us and introducing yourselves, and we're going to look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.